The meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Worsler.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, second by Ms. Schroeder, please vote.
One thing if I could on item 3A, 3A on the consent agenda, can we pull that out, please?
Missouri Southern Caps. Are there any other changes? Any other changes to the agenda? And if not, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Hurd, please vote.
Yes.
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 We have board celebrations. Bright Futures Joplin was awarded $50,000 from the Philanthropic Society of Joplin. This generous gift will help so many Joplin students have what they need to succeed in school. Thank you to the Philanthropic Society of Joplin. Bright Futures also celebrated their 15th birthday last week, where they recognized their volunteers and had a proclamation of Bright Futures Day by Mayor Keenan Cortez. Rhiannon Medley is our June Teacher Proud Tuesday winner. Rhiannon Medley is a literacy support teacher at Cecil Floyd and was nominated by a colleague. Congratulations. Joplin's baseball team had a great season winning, a great season winning the Class 6 District 6 Tournament, where they beat Nixa in the district championship game and qualified to play in the state tournament. Congratulations to these 26 Joplin High School juniors and seniors who earned the Missouri Seal of Bili literacy. This award was given to high school students who have reached a high level of proficiency in speaking, reading, and writing, one or more languages in addition to English. Great job. And finally, congratulations to Joplin High School teacher Carissa Boyer for being named the Science Coach of the Year for 2025 by sciencecoach.org. Science Coach is a nonprofit organization that provides training, research, curriculum, mentorship, classroom resources, and more for 6th through 12th grade science teachers. Congratulations.
Good. Now, we have some recognitions of students.
We will start with DECA. We had nine high school students qualified to compete in the DECA International Career Development Conference held in Orlando. There were students from all over the world, and our group of nine represented Joplin and southwest Missouri with excellence. First, we have Christian Kavanagh, first place and top 20 Silver Medallion for Principles of Finance. And if you'd please come forward, we want to take a photo. I'll present you with a certificate. We have Louisa Kirchen, top 20 Silver Medallion for Principles of Business Management. Duncan Fogarty and Kate Tyson, top 20 Silver Medallion for Business Law and Ethics Team. Angel Gonzalez, top 20 Silver Medallion for School-Based Enterprise with the Jojo's Coffee Shop. And the team of Lucy Erisman, sorry, not a team, Lucy Erisman, Libby Munn, Abigail McCleary, and Ella Bolt also competed at the international conference. Next, we are celebrating state track. We had 14 students qualify to compete in the Missouri Class 5 State Track and Field Competition. Of the 14, eight placed in their event. Those that placed were Abigail Lowry, Elijah Madison, Riley Strickland, and Leah Vogel. And these were, these ladies were on the four-by-one relay and placed seventh in the state. Next, Ava Werberger-Dole placed third in the girls' 3200 meters. Neil Barstow placed fifth in shot put. Avaris Kuhn-Wafford placed second in the boys' 300 hurdles. Wayfarer Moore with a time of 38.45 that broke the school record. And Aiden Scortum placed seventh in the triple jump. Also competing in the state competition, Kyrie Britton and Ally Modras in the girls' four-by-four. Kendall Nyarango in the girls' four-by-two. Chase Tom Palmer in the boys' four-by-two. Isaiah Tom in the boys' 300 hurdles. And Thomas in the boys' four-by-two.
Okay, we had, we just went to the MSBA, the Missouri School Board Association Summer Summit just recently, and two of our board members were awarded and given plaques for their work and professional development and trying to improve themselves as board members. Martha Schroeder was given a plaque and honored for master's level achievement as a board member, and Riley Hartwell for earning his advanced board member certification. Congratulations to you. And last, I want to say a big thank you to the Board of Education for their commitment to improve themselves and provide an example for the rest of the district. Last year, we won the Governance Award, and again, this year, we won the Governance Award. And what that has to do with the school district is important because leadership starts at the top, and leaders should always be developing themselves. That goes all the way around, all the way to every employee in the district, and it starts with the Board of Education. And so there's a significant amount of work and study that's been involved in this. And Joplin Board was one of 23 boards from across the state to receive this award at the MSBA Summer Summit held in Branson. To earn the award, board members must attend various training sessions among many other individual development requirements. Congratulations to our entire team of board members who've been very exceptional in this. Ms. Scherr, please come up, we have a plaque. And it'll go right as you come in. And I really appreciate the commitment of the board to continue this development of all of us. While I'm at the podium, I'll do another little presentation. So, tonight is the last meeting for Shelley Toff, our Chief Financial Officer. And publicly and on camera, I want to say a few things about Shelley. And I know the rest of the team and the board all concur. Shelley has been a stalwart, extremely proficient. We got her for many, many years as a certified public accountant. A lot of work in her past, she brought a lot of experience to us. She worked diligently under Dr. Langford when he was here and assumed that role ever since he retired and left our district. And I can't say enough about how exceptionally proficient Shelley is, how much she's taught all of us about what we do, about how to be very careful with the budgets, and to really mind our Ps and Qs and check our math all the time. That's, that happens all the time. But mainly is, she's adapted from her role in the, in the, out in the real world, so to speak, to understand how her role impacts kids and faculty members and staff members every day. And I want to thank her for, profusely, for everything that she's done. And I have a presentation for you, Shelley, if you'd come up. On behalf of Joplin Schools Board of Education, congratulations on your retirement. Shelley Toff, thank you for your dedication and integrity the past seven years. Your financial expertise has positively impacted everyone in the Joplin district, students and staff alike. Joplin Schools is grateful for your beautiful service and wish you the best in your future. And we have the muscles. And here is a card as well.
I know you love that.
I know, I know. I just want to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity and just all the hard work that everybody does as a team. That's what's made Joplin Schools what it is. It's all teamwork.
Shelley, you'll be missed. Okay, we have a finance committee update, please, Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, just a couple of things I'd call out. You know, first of all, as we look at our budgeting and financing, I think we've done a good job where we focus in on the strategic investments in our facilities and our staff, our programs, some of the capital projects that are upcoming. From a revenue perspective, we stayed pretty flat the last couple of years, but it's kind of stayed around that $126 million range. We keep an eye on that along with our expenses, and our expenses have stayed pretty close in balance with that. We do have a strong reserves, which is great because that'll help us weather any storms that are unforeseen in the future. We're always very mindful of the reserves that we have, and, you know, '24, '25, we had a 67% reserve. Looking forward, that's going to drop a little bit to 61% this upcoming year, and then it trends down into 56, 53 in the following years. And so that's a little bit of a concern for us, but I think as a board, we've been very conservative in how we spend. We spent, invested wisely. We keep a close look on that, that overall level that we have on our balances. So we'll continue to look at that and focus on that and be fiscally responsible as we go forward. But I think we're in probably one of the better shapes in the state would be my guess. I don't have that right in front of me, but I would probably put us in the top 10. Shelley, again, thank you for your efforts on that, too. The way Shelley has always presented things, it's very plain, it's very straight, easy line of sight. So that's been easy for us as a board then to look at it and make decisions. So thank you for that, Shelley, and Jordan, I know you will continue with that. So should be a seamless handoff, like we're running a relay race, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Policy committee update, Mr. Robertson.
We had nine new policy updates come out during this meeting we had. A lot of those updates are being prompted by guidance from the Missouri School Board Association, the U.S. Office of Management Budget, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The first one talks about the district wellness. It's an update to strengthen our wellness policies and improve, that will help us improve transparency and accountability in promoting student health. The next one is reviews from investments and surplus funds, sorry, revenues. And it will, it helps us, the changes are where it affirms our legal priorities, both safety, liquidity, and yield. It clarifies the authority and responsibilities of fund managers and references acceptable investment instruments and optional use of the Missouri State Treasurer's model for investment policy. Whew, that's a handful. The next one talks about our revenues from investments, how we can use, the, how we can use surplus funds. And it defines what a surplus fund is and the restrictions of what we can use it for. It requires a tracking and accounting of the investment earnings and clarifies permissible transfers and expenditures of income investment. The next one is about purchasing, and the key changes in it, they establish the bid thresholds and procurement levels, clarifies purchasing officer and authority and the delegation to that officer, emphasizes fair competition and conflict of interest standards. Next, we've got the federal programs and projects policy that integrates new guidance from, again, the Department of Management and Budget on grants, how we procure grants and stuff. It expands key definitions and emphasizes whistleblower protections and documentation of our procurement procedures. Next is a policy about our federal funds, about allowable expenses. It defines what is allowable and what are reasonable costs, clarifies the handling of direct versus indirect costs, and emphasizes cost documentation aligned with federal standards. Next, we've got federal funds, cash management. Specifically, it requires reimbursement-based drawdowns after expenditures, and it identifies federal funds with detailed accounting codes. After that, we've got protected staff communications. It expands the list of protected communications under federal law, and it prohibits reprisals for disclosures to public officials or the media, and clarifies the rights of staff to testify and report misconduct. Continuing, we've got programs for, updated to our programs for homeless students, where it references the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's 2024 Homeless Dispute Resolution Process. It clarifies the school of origin and best interest placement standards, and it strengthens the enrollment rights and service coordination protocols. That's all nine of them.
Thank you. Great. Sounds like you're busy. All right, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cicada.
Okay, every month, we do something, we present to you, excuse me, something about our strategic plan, something that affects data usually, or something anecdotally that's happening in the schools to help improve our school district for a continuous improvement process. So this month, Ms. Coin was going to be here, but she had an illness in the family. So Dr. Patterson is going to talk about school climate. What we've done is we pulled out for the survey, there'll be more information about the survey later from different parts of the survey, but this is about school climate specifically. So we pulled those out.
This survey was given in February of 2025, and so I'm going to talk a little bit in a couple of places comparing to last year, and it was also given in February last year. I shared it with you.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to get it up on the screens here in just a second, sorry about that. You want us to come back? Yeah, almost there.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry about that.
So you can see here, there were 473 parents who responded and 859 staff that responded to the survey. And overall, there was a satisfaction of 84.12% that were very or somewhat satisfied. So we're going to look at a few of the questions from the parent responses. Overall, 82% on all of these questions were strongly or somewhat agree in regards to culture and climate in the Joplin schools. So very strong results in regards from our parent responses. The next slide will take you a little bit about their comments. Overall, from parents, from all of their responses, about 26% of the responses really talked about culture and climate, and some of the top things were relationships mattered the most. Safety, both physical and emotional safety, were important to parents. Consistency and discipline, and then general supports for all students. Some of our staff responses, they were also very positive in regards to mental health supports for students and staff. Those two questions, questions four and five, were up over 12% from last year. Yeah, they seem low, go back one slide. Yeah, questions four and five, where it talks about mental health, even though that they are in the 70s, 60s and 70s, they were up over 12% from last year. So still a continued focus for us, but making some grounds. The next slide also talks about staff responses. The questions that are at or below 70%, which there were a few, questions seven and 12, they were still an increase over last year by at least seven, at least 11%. That question 12, which is a little concerning, the level of parental support for your class or school, even though that's at 58%, it was 47% last year. So we've made some gains, yes.
And that's the staff saying that?
Yeah, that's the staff's perception, but it's still an increase and an area that we need to work on.
So on item number seven, the consistency with which discipline is administered in your building. You know, as a board member, I hear oftentimes concerns about rising severity of discipline in our buildings. So I think it's, it's interesting that we, that we're there, but also that there's probably a lot of room to grow to support our staff in that area.
And it was up over last year, too. So like 58% last year.
I mean, that's a tougher one, too, because obviously you don't go advertise A through Z on whatever issue is.
Right.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure most of our schools, if not all of them, are falling basically a matrix on code of conduct, so there's a consistency with which it's applied. But again, we don't go advertise, you know, A through Z on a particular issue. So maybe part of that is that, you know, people tend to focus on, how did it affect just me right now? And they don't see some of that broader picture, I would guess.
And sometimes they don't know what happened.
Right.
And so sometimes they assume, and not the right assumption. The next slide is just some comments from staff, and again, 43% of staff comments were in reference to climate and culture. Their main themes were leadership comes first, calm classrooms, a need for continued strategic focus on addressing student behavioral issues, respect staff expertise, and top-down support in regard to need for increased supports to address mental health and morale, which we've made an increase over last year, but an area still to continue to work on. Those are the questions that related to culture and climate. The results for all the areas are on our website.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? All right, the health insurance and dental care insurance reports, it's talked.
Okay, on our health and dental fund, through May, our expenses were $7,725,544. With the increased cost that we have seen in the health and dental fund, I did make a budget adjustment of $790,000 to the health and dental fund, and that's really kind of a, just a line item. We weren't pulling any district funds over to that. It was just that we were spending more than what I had originally budgeted for in that fund. So that was just to hopefully not overspend in the health and dental fund. So that made, at May, the percent that we have spent is 86.6% of the budget. And our health fund for this year is down $1,054,000. Last year, overall, it was down $620,000. So we are seeing that decline of our reserves in the health and dental fund. Any questions?
I mean, Shelley, is it a one-off type item, or is it just run across the board? Is there any trend you can point to on it?
There are, we have like four or five.
We have about four or five high cost claimants. So it's, it's, we had a couple of years back, we had a bad year that ran tight as well. And so this is just a.
Bad year for claims, high claims. I would say that our prescription costs are down. That was running us pretty heavily, it was higher, it was most of our highest cost. That was one of the reasons that we switched to Anthem, and those are tracking well. So really, John, I think it's just some severe cases that have hit us with the employees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the financial report, please.
So on the financial statements, we're looking at the condensed financial statement. We've received, the bulk of our revenue has come in, so we're tracking there. We're probably, with our budget, we'll be doing a few budget adjustments to increase our budgeted revenue to kind of get that in line, because we still have some more to come in in June. The expenditures are tracking well, but still three months of salaries to hit in this month of June, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Worsler, are there any public comments? Thank you. We have a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Make a motion through the consent agenda, minus the change you made earlier.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Hurd, please vote.
Yes.
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 Lori.
Lori. Yes.
And yes for me, thank you. We have the regular agenda, accounts payable, and it's talked.
Okay, our bill list tonight is $12,692,495.83 compared to a year ago of $10,661,252. One of the big items on this bill list is we paid half down on the HVAC replacement, or that did this month. It was free last month.
Thank you. Sir, any discussion? I have a motion.
I move that we pay bills.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Schroder, a second by Mr. Robertson.
Yes.
There's no further discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Final budget adjustments. Dr. Vicki.
Okay, before Shelley presents the preliminary budget for '25, '26, we need to put a bow on '24, '25. This is the final budget adjustment that'll be brought to you tonight to bring us as close as we can project to actual expenses and revenues. We're not, when we're looking at what we're expecting through the end of June. The expenditure adjustments are in the amount of $3,387,300. You can see the summary there with the detail in the complete packet, with some adjustments to title expenditures, that ESEA adjustment, student supply adjustments, we've purchased some additional technology and nurse supplies. We've seen an increase in food costs, that makes up the majority of the operational expense. That big capital project adjustments is the Irving windows and some other building improvements that the board has seen. And then the decrease in salary and benefits is to adjust the Adult Vocational Education Program to more accurately reflect the number of staff that we needed to hire to teach those classes this year. For revenues, the adjustments total $4,711,526. We've seen a big increase in some delinquent money coming through and the in lieu of tax and miscellaneous revenue. The interest still hasn't dropped as low as we thought that it might, and so we were able to increase the revenue from our temporary deposits. Student activities are increasing. And then we were able to estimate our attendance this year with the state. Due to the new thresholds with free and reduced lunch, the district took advantage of that and were able to estimate our attendance, and we're paid on the higher amount this year, which is that large $2.6 million state revenue increase. We saw additional funds come in through the QPK grant that we implemented this year, additional ECSE revenue, and then some sale of property. And then the reduction that you see with revenue is about a $400,000 reduction in student meal reimbursements. We're still waiting to kind of do a final analysis of what's happening with food service, but with changing up how we're charging for some student meals, and that has changed for us a little bit. So we're going to be watching that and working with food service and operations. The net revenue increase for these adjustments is $1,324,523. And then you can see there in the action item, the general fund projected balance would be $59.3 million, with 57.2 being unrestricted. And then you can also see in the capital projects fund, we've line itemed for you how much of that is uncommitted, because we have already committed a substantial amount of capital projects to Phase One of the elementary projects, the windows, the Irving HVAC and the windows addition that we're doing with Phase One. What questions can we answer for you?
When will you know the final on the student lunch reimbursement?
We have, they've put in a request so that we could try to get some last payments in through June. So we should see some of that revenue come in later this week. Hopefully, we're able to put a, kind of tie that up and look at how the summer program is going to pay out. That's what they're wrapping up right now. And then we will look at making sure that we've accounted for, like, appropriate utility costs and some other things that we do at the end of the year to overall analyze food service expenses and revenues.
Is that waiting?
Any idea what that $400,000 becomes?
What it becomes? I think some of it had to do with, we had a lot of AMI days this year and that forgiven day. So there were several days that we weren't here, which accounts for a lot of meals that were not served, that accounts for part of that.
Yeah.
Part of it is, we aren't doing breakfast for everybody anymore, so not as many kids are eating breakfast, so that reimbursement is lower.
So you think that 400 is about what the number is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Oh, sorry.
I was saying that there was a couple of weeks before the end of June that you're closing the gap. That's not what you're saying.
No, I'm sorry for being unclear. But we try to look at food service as a whole, so that we can do the DESI financial statement for that. And we're waiting to wrap up some final things before that's ready.
Are we waiting for information from the state or from the Fed? Or is it from?
It's just to wrap up getting, receiving our final payments from the state.
I think they were submitted on the 10th of June, and we haven't got that.
Okay. Hopefully this week.
I have a motion to approve the budget adjustments.
I move to approve the final budget adjustments.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroder. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, Ms. Toft, the preliminary budget for 2025, 2026.
Okay. Tonight, we're bringing the budget for next year, and we are, the budget serves as a strategic tool that helps guide the business and educational operations of the school district. It reflects the educational philosophy and the mission statement, providing a framework in which the district's administration can operate properly. So the budget provides the anticipated expenditures and revenues that we're expecting for this next year. It's not a static document. It will be fluid as we get more information as we move into and other actual expenses become more realistic. We're going to focus on three, our strategic plan has three main focuses. Those are academic achievement, instructional support, communications, and community engagement. And all three of these areas have significant budget implications, and this budget strategically focused on supporting all of those. Our revenue sources, local revenue is around 55%. And then our next highest revenue source is state. And then the federal revenue, state revenue is 31%. State, federal, state revenue is 31%, federal revenue is 10%. The other two remaining items are county and other revenue, and they account for about 4% total. The local revenue, most of that is from assessed property tax. We're expecting a total of $65,636 from local sources, with $44,746,000 being from assessed property tax. Crop seed, which is our, the statewide general sales tax revenue, is another significant portion of our local revenue. And then the surtax on commercial property is $2,150,000. The remaining local things is made up of food service sales add to individual pupils, student activity funds, community services, and Franklin Tech adults tuition fees. Our state revenue, again, was 31% of our total revenue expected. The basic formula is the bulk of that. We were very... We just, we didn't, SAT for the state is, next year is supposed to go up to $7,145 per pupil. And this year, it was $6,760 per attendance. And so, but the state only paid out at $6,750. So we were very conservative on our budget for the basic formula next year. Early childhood is another source of that, career ladder. This next year, we are implementing the Stage Three of our career ladder, which will be for certified teachers. If they meet the criteria, they can earn up to $5,000 additional money for the career ladder. And the state will reimburse that at 60%. Our federal revenue, again, was 10% of our total budget, a little over $12 million. Title programs is the bulk of that, at $4 million. And food service is the other large percentage of that. We also have IDEA, Perkins funding, and early top hit special ed on the federal side. The remaining budget of $3.6 million is coming from county and other sources. The county is the state robo-assessed utilities. And then the other is like career center fees and tuition that we get from other school districts. So this makes our total revenue projected to be $118,632,543. So there is just a graph that kind of shows by fund. I was telling you before, by the local source of the revenue, this is actually by fund. It shows where we've been for the last five years. And then expenditures by type, this is all funds, that 62% is spent on salaries and benefits. And then 9% is purchase services and supply each. This year, capital outlay is 13% because we've got the new building projects going on. And then debt service is 7%. We're projecting a total expenditures of $132,806,535. The bulk of that is the capital outlay is what's making us over. The next slide just shows operating funds, which is Fund One and Two. And there, that's what a lot of people will look at, how much we do spend, just our operating budget on salaries and benefits. So you can see there at 78%, which we're expecting that to be like $82,807,940. And then purchase services and supplies are about equal there at 11% of the remaining part of our operating funds. So all staff was given a salary plus movement on the salary schedule down the skip. And then we're also, the career ladder, we're expecting, if we budgeted for, if everybody that was eligible would do the career ladder. And the district's portion is 40% plus the benefit of those. And then debt service is $9,585,988. That's the principal payment interest on our outstanding bonds. And then capital projects is $16,556,129. This includes the elementary Phase One, including the furniture and windows of $11 million. Also, the Irving HVAC replacement of $1.5 million. We did end up paying a deposit that hit in this fiscal year, so that'll change out. That'll be one of our first budget adjustments that will be made. And then also the remaining capital outlay, which is the miscellaneous projects that was approved by the board back in January. We do. And, no, so that will help cover.
I didn't approve that till tonight, so probably not.
No, that was not. It's not in there. We do plan to make our maximum 7% transfer next year. Still plan to be able to do that. And we're just showing historical expenditures by fund for the last five years. And some of those, a question asked earlier on the debt service back in those '21, '22 years and '22, '23, and that was where we were paying off, like, the 2012 bond and the 2013 bond. So our projected balance sheet, again, the top section shows where we think we're going to end up this fiscal year. The middle section shows our revenues and expenditures that we are expecting next year, and then ending balances at the bottom. So we still show that we are going to end the year in a very favorable condition. We continue to be well positioned financially, because we've been very strategic with all the ESF funds that have come in over the last four or five years. They've allowed us to grow our unrestricted general fund, as well as our capital projects fund, which is allowing us to fund the projects for those three elementary schools without going out for board approvals of any bonds. And we're positioned to handle all the unknown funding shortfalls in the federal, state, and even local level that may come up over the next couple of years.
Shelley, one question on the capital projects fund revenue. That number's down, that 2.8 million is down substantially from the '24, '25 year of $4.5 million. But why has that dropped that far?
That is the classroom trust fund, that 4.2 million that we had been, we can place the classroom trust money. Part of that is, is that amount, that was 2.5 million, that was 2.5. And I think there was a lot, there has been a lot of other, I'm trying to think offhand.
But where did that money go?
We're not pre-budgeting.
The classroom trust fund being placed in Fund Four. So that's a large piece of it.
Yeah, it's placed in Fund One.
So would you take that 4.3 plus the 2.8, is that, will that ultimately be the total?
Yes, the 4.3 is our transfer that we would put in there.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Shelley? I have a motion to accept the budget for next year.
I would have one comment, is that, you know, I think people look at this from a high level, and they say, hey, look, your expenses are going up, you know, substantially year over year, from like a 123 to 132. But Shelley said it, but I want to just say it again, is it's the capital spend that we're doing for that Phase One for the elementary schools. It's the right thing to do for our district, but people will forget about that. I don't want to forget about it. That's why you're seeing the expenses higher. It's, we all agreed on this, the board supports it, but that's the change. It's not that we're spending, we're fiercely conservative, but this is a wise investment in that capital project. So I just wanted to call that out. I would make a motion to approve the preliminary '25, '26 budget as presented by Jordan and Shelley.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroder. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Lori? Lori?
She's saying yes, I can see her, I can see her face moving.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Salary schedule changes.
Yes. We have three updates to the administrative salary schedule. We originally thought the Department of Labor was coming out with some changes that people were going to have to go to an hourly position. And so we, I had left off the benefits coordinator, but then they made some changes, and we are not, it didn't actually go through, so we're not having to, so we're leaving those on the administrative schedules, we're putting that back on. The safety and security director, we are expanding the duties and responsibilities of that position, so we're changing that. And then also, district attendance officer, we are adding activity supervisor to that position as well, so we're placing them on the administrative salary schedule.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I would move to approve the salary schedule changes presented, please.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Mr. Robertson. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. EAB Professional Development Services, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, so we've been talking to EAB off and on, probably for the last three and a half, four years, about professional services that they could offer to us. We worked with them a little bit on some initial items, just a very small, couple phone calls, a couple discussions about attendance about three years ago. Recently, I attended a workshop where they discussed at length about strategic planning and to assist districts in strategic planning, and also help districts move ahead with strategic planning processes without hiring outside consultants. But what also, I mean, in the future, for future reference, but what also interested me about EAB is their best practice research, a dedicated advisor to the district, and the vast number of projects that they will work with a district on all at once. Projects like raising literacy scores, minimizing chronic absenteeism, closing gaps in college. I talked to Dr. Oliver and Casey Dorton about integrating career development, but that would be all through the system. Just systems, issues, problems. Other school districts that have successes and been dealing with similar problems of practice, there's just a myriad of things they work with in addition to strategic planning. And also brand management. So Ms. Coin and I, with this approval, would be, tend to hit the ground running very quickly and start working on strategic planning and leadership effectiveness throughout the district. That would be the first thing that we work on. And then we will add items and different folks in the district to work with different advisors with them. This is a professional development contract. This is a professional development contract, it's a three-year agreement. There are several, I've talked to them many times, and they also work with universities as well all the way. A few districts in Missouri that utilize them and have been partners with them for quite a while, or Liberty up in Kansas City, Park Hill up in Kansas City, as well as Raytown. Rockwood just recently signed a three-year agreement in St. Louis. Republic's been with them several years. They have an extended relationship with Latha, Kansas, Prairie, Oklahoma also, Jinx, which is a big district in Oklahoma. So they're a nationwide company out of Virginia, and this is a three-year agreement, but it also has an opt-out option for us if we don't believe that, you know, that we're getting money for what we're asking for. And everybody I've talked to has stayed with them. They like the service, and it'll be a professional development expense.
I really like that it is a job-embedded professional development. It's not sending everybody to workshops, bringing it back, it's working together as a team. I like that it would provide that development, professional development and assistance in not only developing a new strategic plan, which we know we're not, because it's a living, it's a living plan, but to modify, make changes as needed. And I think this is a great opportunity for our administration and for our staff, I really do. Money well spent when you look at the amount of money, considering how many our students, et cetera, when we divide it all out, it's not a lot of money.
Will this be able to give us opportunities for professional development for our certified staff, I'm sorry, certified, classified staff like secretaries and such?
I'm not aware of those activities yet. However, I know in human resources, there's some work that can be done there, and we'll research that. But I am not aware with some of the issues that we're talking about now. Now, AI is also a part of this. We can partner with them with AI services as far as developing plans and programs for that, but I'll have to research that a little bit for more for classified.
Would this have an opportunity to reduce the amount of time teachers are out of the classroom to attend? Is this for teachers or for administration?
Mostly for administration, principals and central office. However, it's possible, very possible, that depending on some remote cases, I can think of career development, especially with some of the leadership that Dr. Oliver has in the building, that some teachers would be probably in some of the potential sessions, yes.
And Dr. Saketa, I was thinking, going back to the survey results that Tracy presented, when we look at that, if there are areas, for example, related to discipline, that would be an area that if, feeling that that's a need based on staff response, it would have, this could allow our administrators, our principals to receive extra job-embedded professional development to assist with that discipline and discipline response, and also cultural response with their teachers, right?
Right.
Okay.
Carrie, is there any offset? I think, remember if you heard me right, we spent some dollars, not a tremendous, on consultants in the past, on strategic plans and that, but that would replace those dollars, and I don't even recall how much we spent offhand, but do you-
Between 80 and 90,000, just on the strategic plan. This, and that's why I wanted, that's why I was interested in this. I was, honestly, I was interested in the strategic plan, but I'm more interested beyond the strategic plan and not hiring somebody to come in and do our strategic plan. Their role is to help us do it and put it into place. And I feel like the district is in a lot of different, a different place than it was several years ago. We developed the last strategic plan, we've been out in the community more, we've talked to the people in the community, we've held superintendent forums and other forums with a vast number of people, and I think that with their assistance and guidance and some other people across the country, that Ms. Coin and I can develop a system for us to put it in place without hiring anybody else.
So you get some better tools, and it's probably about a push on the dollar for overall spend.
Well, yeah.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the EAB program as presented, for the three-year term.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroeder. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. District insurance bids, Dr. Harding.
Yes, it's that time of year for our insurance bid, and we had some favorable news. We have over $516 million of insurable property that we have in the district. For our property insurance, we actually saw a reduction in that. That doesn't happen very often, especially talking to other school districts around the state. There were some raises in some other areas, for example, cyber and board of education, auto fleet coverage, and those went up a little bit. Probably the biggest misconception is on workers' compensation, it went up a little, but we had the best mod rate we've ever had. We had a .8 mod rate this year. However, when our total salaries go up, it also causes the price to go up. So it's kind of, they work against each other a little bit, but with our teachers and staff doing a great job taking care of our buildings and being careful and doing all that, overall we saw very good, it's an increase, but it's a smaller increase than what many districts are seeing around the state.
Point 9.7, we brought it to .80. Most schools start at .90. So one of the people on the call in the meeting said they wish their school, local school district was running as patient as ours, which is wrong.
And if the reason for insurance increasing is that we've increased teacher salaries and salaries of our employees, I think we can live with that.
Versus accidents.
Right.
So we recommend to, with CPSK, continue our, approve the renewals of our insurance premiums.
Do I have a motion?
Ask presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Mr. Robertson, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Digital radio purchase, Dr. Harding.
Yeah, so last year, we approved radios for the high school and the middle schools, which has gone very well for the buildings. And one of the purposes was to make sure that those radios interacted with the emergency radios that we already have in the buildings. The next step to do that, the next step on that, Jim Howenschel and I were looking at is, how do we do that with the elementary schools? Because all the elementary schools, early childhood and Dunwoy Education are very different, not only in size, but how they utilize radios in the buildings. So that has been a process for us to work through. In the end, we got with all the principals, looked at the building size, number of staff members, number of students, number of programs, and kind of developed a formula, talked with them all, and kind of came up with an average number per building based on all those factors. And so tonight, we bring to you the purchase of 300 radios that will be distributed to the elementary schools, the early childhood center, and also Dunwoy Education Center for the upcoming school years that will be not only in their building with secure channels. Right now, many of our buildings are using walkie-talkies from Walmart, and they're not the best ones to be using, especially if you're talking about kids. And so these will be secure networks, they will all work together with inside the building. There's also a channel that will be programmed, they can talk across schools, so if you have multiple schools working in a vent, they can all talk to each other on the radios. And they will also work with the emergency radios that are already in the schools. So we're, to a point, where all the radios in our buildings are all working together on the same page.
I want to say that this is, I think, a great deal. I was in a school about three months ago, and I was surprised to hear a construction site being picked up by our current radio system. And we know that we have a lot of conversations in our schools every day, and to be able to have a secure system to do that is critical for the district and for our staff and our administrators.
And I want to shout out to the Safety and Security Committee, because that's where a lot of this came from, is talking through those and getting the feedback from the principals, the teachers, and the board members on that committee to help with this process.
I approve the purchase of digital radios.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Mr. Hurd, please vote.
Yes.
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 Kelsey Norman, change order number one, Dr. Harding.
Yes, so as we're going through the district and replacing the playground equipment that's aging, when we got to Kelsey Norman, we removed the fall protection, that's the old rubber fall protection, and upon removing that, we saw that the concrete underneath was not adequate for the new structure. And so I'll let Dave kind of fill in on the rest of the story, because it's been a fun one.
Yeah, it's been a challenge. Once the existing playground surfacing that was there was somewhat masking the slab and what we needed, the existing playground equipment footprint for what was there is a little smaller than what we're going to install with the new, because we're adding a larger-scale piece of equipment, as well as three other additional pieces of equipment. Once that was removed, we found that the slopes, the, we were going to have slides that were terminating about this far off the ground, so it was a pretty good fall, and then at the other end, you were sliding directly onto the concrete. So we needed to take a look at how we were going to revamp that. The kids might have enjoyed that, but didn't feel like that from a safety standpoint was an advantage for the district. So we looked at the options, because even the, for lack of a better term, the root balls from the existing pieces of equipment that were there were large pieces of concrete that were holding all those pieces in place. Those have to be cut out and removed anyway. When we looked at the whole scope, it was, it was a much better fit for us just to remove all of that, have them come back, pour the curb, and then pour a new slab so that we have a nice, gently sloped, rather than looking like an upside-down Reese's cup, so that we have a gentle slope, so that we can place that new equipment. So we are asking you to accept the change order tonight, 001, for the Kelsey Norman Playground for $65,875.
Mr. President, a question for you. I'm the board rep for Kelsey Norman, and I've noticed sometimes when I've been in, on that playground, that there is a pretty significant drop-off from where the ground meets the actual concrete, so sharp edge at the end, as well as if someone were to go off quickly, there could be an issue. I witnessed that. Can you kind of share what that might look like with this new pour? Will it be more in line as, more of a seamless transition as to say, from the concrete to the actual ground itself?
Yes, so what you'll have now is you'll have a curb that's two and three quarters of an inch above the play surface. That will then be infilled with the padding and the turf surface. So all of that will be level with the top of the curb. Then, as we discuss number 002 change order, all of that then will be changed and sloped up to meet the top of the curbs, that you have little, if any, transition off to the ground level. It will have a gentle slope then away from that, so that the access to that will not be problematic or be a trip hazard.
Very good, because it was my observation that there was a pretty significant drop there, as well as there's been quite a bit of erosion, I think, over the years, so I want to make sure that was addressed.
Yes, we're going to address that.
Thank you.
Can we take these change order one and two and just do one motion on them, because it's kind of like part one or part A, part B, it's the same thing, it's just an extension. So if that's permissible, I would make a motion that we approve change order one and change order two for the playground as David's presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Mr. Hartwell. If there's any further discussion, if not, please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I would, I also know we just put a really nice field in there as well, two years ago, the board chose to do that, so I would hope that we would make sure that that area is not damaged while we install the track.
Dr. Saketa, appoint board treasurer.
Okay, annually, on or before July 15th of each year, we need to appoint a board treasurer by statute. Dr. Jordan Dickey, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, will be taking over the duties of the current CFO, Shelley Toft, after her retirement, which will be in effect June 30, 2025. Administration recommends the board approve the appointment of Dr. Jordan Dickey as board treasurer for the upcoming fiscal year 2025, '26.
I make a motion to appoint Dr. Jordan Dickey into the position. Congratulations.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Mr. Robertson, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, congratulations.
Very good, congratulations.
Dr. Saketa, the board secretary position.
Okay, the same goes for board secretary, on or before July 15th of each year. Cheryl Worsler has 22 years of experience as secretary in the district, has been the board secretary for the past two years. Administration recommends that the board approve the appointment of Cheryl Worsler as the board secretary for the 2025, '26 fiscal year.
I move that we approve the appointment of Cheryl Worsler as the board secretary for this upcoming fiscal year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Hartwell, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And Dr. Saketa, the policy update, I know we got a very good-
Yes.
-summary of it from Mr. Robertson earlier.
Yes, Matthew did a very good job summarizing the policies, just as typical, and we're going to have a lot more coming in by August 28th coming up very soon, so the policy committee will be revving up again. But I would move that the board, or not move, but I would suggest, recommend that the board adopt these policies.
I move to approve the first reading of the policies as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroeder, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Now we go to consideration of MOSO caps for 2025, 2026. Dr. Wongi, but Mr. Hurd, you pulled off the agenda, did you have-
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this, is this one, I just wanted to shine a light a day on it, because this was one that was very contentious a couple years ago, this was first presented to the board, which is, I think that's three years ago probably, I think probably you and I were on at the time. But the suggestion at that time was that we were going to go ahead and approve for 49 students. And, you know, there's a lot of conversation on it, a lot of dialogue back. And, you know, I think by us as a board then being fiscally conservative, I think it flows through to what we're doing today and how we're looking ahead to the future. But for this to have grown and done well, and I salute Missouri Southern for the progress they've made on it, we had 12 students this past year, so we have 17 now, we're going to pay as a per-head going forward, which I think is what part of that conversation was a couple of years ago, I think it's the right thing. We're growing with them, they're growing, they're growing the program. How large they can make it, I don't know, but I always thought it was going to be a kind of an organic growth as the community got behind it. And so I just wanted to call out that I think that we were shrewd then, we were conservative then, the program has grown, I think it's been successful. I absolutely support it, and, you know, hat off to Dr. Van Galen, the team over at Missouri Southern, also for making this a success, and that it's at the right, you know, cost per head for us as our students. So I think we did the right thing overall, and the program's done really well. So I just wanted to call that out, instead of just having the consent agenda. I don't have any issue with it, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we all remembered, you know, how, kind of how this started, where we got to it, and some of that healthy debate, in the end, I think helped us get to a better spot with the overall program. So I commend the administration in Missouri Southern for making the program a success. That was all.
I move to approve the Missouri Southern caps renewal for the '25, '26 school year.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, and a second by Mr. Hurd, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And if there is nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Schroeder, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, we're adjourned.
Well, I hope you got the phone a little bit better while the meeting went on.